Good evening and welcome to the Brockton Public Schools Policy Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 4th. Time is 6:00 PM prior to our meeting. Can we just all please stand and salute our flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, September 4th. We are gathered in the George Ram Little Theater here at Brockton High School and this is our Policy Subcommittee Meeting. Prior to the start of the meeting, we will establish a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan.
Yeah.
Mr. Vega.
Here.
Mrs. Oliver.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Ms. Azak.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
And Superintendent Pria is Secretary here and myself, Tony Rodriguez, as the Chair, Vice Chair of the School Committee. We have various discussions of policies regarding civil rights and IHBG homeschooling and I will hand the reins over to the Superintendent.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. So items number four and five are discussion of two different policies, the first one being our civil rights policies and the second one being our policy on homeschooling. So I respectfully request that we take these items collectively as Dr. LaBelle Wall will be speaking to both of them. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. I'm just so excited to be here. They're slipping out of my hands. Maybe I'll first address just a brief overview of what we are proposing relative to the revision of our civil rights policies. Just to give a bit of context, one of the major pieces of my role as your Assistant Superintendent for Unified Student Services is to service a district's civil rights officer, Title IX officer, as well as the office that manages and sort of supports any investigations relative to any potential violation of civil rights. As you know, the United States Department of Education revised its procedures around how to manage Title IX investigations for the entire nation. There had been a lot of back and forth. The actual rule, final rules were delayed slightly based on when they put, when the Department of Education put it out for public comment, they received hundreds of thousands of pieces of public comment. And so effective August 1, the final rule on the implementation of Title IX across the United States took effect. And so as you know, we always have law and policy absence, so I want to be clear that just because the policy is revising does not mean we have not adjusted our implementation of Title IX and Title IX protections for all staff and students who attend the Brockton Public Schools. So taken collectively, they represent six interconnected policies. Several are revisions from previously existing policies that the committee had in its policy handbook and then there are several that are new policies establishing grievance procedures for civil rights complaints. So if it pleases the committee, I'll take them each one by one and just articulate sort at a 30,000-foot level what those changes are. And I do appreciate your feedback after the handbook conversation and I hope that you had sufficient time with the proposals to sort of see those edits and revisions prior to this evening. So the first is Policy AC, non-discrimination. And the draft attached, the memo that you received in hard copy from Ms. Campbell outlines those track changes that we are proposing, we make to Policy AC. The changes proposed were designed to provide greater clarity and extend the protected classes. So for example, Title IX now protects against discrimination harassment on the basis of gender expression, right? So that language wasn't necessarily in the previous policy but now is updated in the current revision. It also updates the legal references that the policy is derived from in terms of both state and federal law and it inserts a new series of cross-references, right? To ensure anybody who's reading the policy understands the interconnectedness between non-discrimination and all other forms of potential civil rights violation. And again, the draft was received from MASC, was reviewed by council and there were some edits made in the council's opinion to better protect the students and the staff of the Brockton Public Schools. Policy ACA is non-discrimination on the basis of sex. Again, this was an existing policy within the committee's manual. The attached draft, hard copy, sort of shows you the proposed changes to what was existing. It also, this policy also aligns on the establishment of protected classes. It references the new Title IX regulations, establishes the notification requirement and actually in that policy you see a square that we will be taking and sort of posting around the district so people understand who the officers are and it establishes our responsibility to continually notify students, community and staff of their civil rights officers relative to non-discrimination on the basis of sex. It also identifies the Title IX coordinator and again, updates legal references and cross-references for the committee's handbook. ACAR, non-discrimination on the basis of sex, Title IX including sex-based harassment, is a new proposed policy. Again, it was MASC's version that our attorneys then sort of looked at again, added another layer of feedback for us. And what this policy does is it establishes our full compliance with the Title IX new rule that came into effect August 1 of 2024. Specifically, the policy establishes the creation and names the Title IX coordinator for the district. It also outlines the associated training requirements. So me as your coordinator actually attended a training with the National Association of Title IX Administrators who trained me, for example, of how to come back and then perform that role for the Brockton Public Schools. It also establishes protections relative to parental, family or marital status. Those were new protections under Title IX as well as those who may be pregnant or have pregnancy-related concerns and any potential discrimination relative to pregnancy or pregnancy-related concerns. It also outlines the district's implementation of the various stages of the Title IX process and establishes both legal references and new cross-references that then compare to the other policies in the committee's manual. The next policy, ACAB, is a existing policy that was previously in the committee's manual. The attached draft documents those proposed changes that we're making to assure compliance. The updated policy, as you can notice, establishes again, the cross-reference of those protected classes. It defines those protected classes and it also moves the previous policy, the committee's policy, ACAB, was both a statement of policy but also the procedures we're supposed to follow. So what MASC is recommending is you separate those two things. So in case there are any other changes, for example, to the procedure, you don't have to go back and adjust the policy statement, right? You just have to go to that, the regulation section, sorry, ACGB, which is a new policy that establishes the grievance process as an independent policy of the committee. And so what you'll notice in that track change, you'll see a lot of stuff going away, but I want to assure the committee, if you look at ACGB, you'll see all of those pieces reimagined there under its own policy. And ACGA is a substantively new policy. And what this, it did not previously exist in the committee's manual, but what it does is it establishes district-wide procedure for the handling of any alleged civil rights violation. Before, we were using best practice, which included notification, investigation, formal report writing, communication to all impacted parties, but that was more from best practice. We were actually taking what was outlined in the old ACAB and applying that to any civil rights violation. This new policy establishes its own grievance process for any Title IX, sorry, any civil rights issue that's not Title IX. Title IX has its own and this establishes the grievance procedure for any potential civil rights violation. And lastly, just I'll mention it briefly because I just made reference to it, but Policy ACGB are the Title IX grievance procedures which historically lived under ACAB in the old manual. And those are the, sort of a brief overview of the civil rights policies. Again, the original drafts came from MASC, the Association of School Committees, with legal review who then added some edits and adjustments to ensure compliance. And at this point, maybe I'll pause just before we get to homeschool to see if there's any questions. That was a lot, so I appreciate you bearing with me and I'm happy to pause if there's any questions, comments or concerns.
Thank you. I'll open up questions to any members of the committee. Mr. Vega followed by Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you for that. And I appreciate, you know, the work that you're doing in this because it's a critical piece of what we do for our students, what we do for our teachers, what we do for our families. Can you give us like, like, do we, should we be concerned and be more strategic about any areas that maybe, you know, with your recent training and with some of the recommendations that have come your way, is there any particular areas that we as a district need to be concerned about or focused on? To improve, I mean.
Sure. I appreciate the question. I think one of the opportunities I'm given in my role is as we live the year, being able to make sort of in vivo adjustments to sort of based on how particular cases might be flowing. What I mean by that is the one space where we're continuing to work as an administrative team is on the intersectionality of all of it, right? So you've got Title IX that protects against sex and gender-based discrimination, then you have an independent policy on, say, bullying, right? So the challenge becomes in implementing all of this, if that's fair. The implementation challenge becomes simultaneously living in potential multiple violations that might be happening across multiple policies. And I will say, from my time working with the administrative team here, that's how we've also begun to rethink our discipline, right? Because really what's happening is what we're missing. If we just say, you know, your behavior was X and therefore you're going to get this many days of suspension, right? The reality becomes what we're missing there is the policy violation of the committee. If you only ever address it as a disciplinary issue, we lose the ability as an educational institution to truly lean into helping kids grow and understand because there will come a point where the laws that exist in the Commonwealth and throughout the country are not going to be as supportive. So one of our responsibilities is to ensure how do we produce well-adjusted, thoughtful, committed citizens who will honor and respect everybody's rights. And that is an area of growth for us, is that intersectionality of one issue could actually be four different policy violations. And how do you do that in a way that doesn't overwhelm people, that gives everybody an assertion and establishment of their rights and protects the individual privacy of everybody that's involved? And I think for, in my lived experience working with the Brockton Public Schools and the cases that we've been working through the last few years, that has been the biggest area of growth for us, is really learning and building capacity to think multidimensionally around a particular issue. You might think it's just two students who might be disagreeing about something, but the language choice that we're using sort of has other implications that go well beyond. We do not live in a world where you can use that kind of slang, right? And people are going to think it's okay. So the other thing we've been really trying to work on is prioritizing harm over intent. And that's a really fine line to walk. We are not in the business of shaming children or blaming or pointing fingers, but at the same time, whether or not you intended for that harm to have occurred, at some point becomes irrelevant because it has. And so what do we do differently? And that's where you'll see the introduction of things like restorative practices and restorative justice as a way of really supporting students in establishing their place in that community, having owned what happened, but then the adults and the other students being patient and gracious enough to allow their return and really sort of to reestablish their place in that community by ignoring the harm that gets done when we use slang or we use sort of harmful words or vocabulary with kids. Whether or not that was your intention, that was the impact. And so that has also been an area of growth for us, is really trying to understand the impact that these very real situations have on our students and their ability to feel safe and seen in our schools.
No, I love that, you know, the idea, in our household, we talk about impact versus intention, you know? And for folks who, you know, sometimes can be critical of restorative practices, it's, you know, I think some folks lose sight of the fact that if a child believes they didn't intend to do a thing and you keep saying you did something wrong, that's a conversation that goes nowhere. But when you talk about the impact behind it and you kind of challenge them to think further, that's where growth happens. I wonder, can you give us any kind of sense of the number of grievances that we might accumulate in any given year and how it compares to other districts?
Yes. So what I can probably, I'm going to speak in very general terms and then what I will sort of come back to you with is a breakdown since my arrival of what we've seen across the different policy areas. So Title IX has probably been the one area that with a lot of training, as I entered the district and sort of could bring back that knowledge to the team, we have seen an increase of. So I want to caution that, right? Because I don't know that we're really seeing an increase, but we're seeing a change in the way we approach the issue and the implementation of protections and procedures and the right vocabulary, right? That the team should be using when dealing with these particular cases. So I mean, I think last year, maybe just for Title IX, we saw, we did see an increase over that first year, 22, 23. 23, 24 maybe doubled the total number. But again, I'm not convinced that it wasn't happening. What I think is the way we dealt, we're dealing with it now and our approach of using the policy, implementing the policy, I've been in meetings with schools to sort of explain to parents through interpreters their rights, right? And what this very sort of traumatic and challenging that happened, they have a voice here, right? And so I'll give them time and space and that modeling has sort of opened a line of communication where I think people feel more comfortable to speak up. And there is action taken in the immediate moment, within literally hours of a potential violation. We have sent, we have reached out to the families, to the students, we have informed of their rights, we have let them know if you want to go down this road, here's what's going to happen, if you want to go down that road, here's what's going to happen. So it'll be hard to, in Title IX, I would argue, it would be hard to sort of have a comparison because those are also very confidential cases that we maintain privacy of all involved. Bullying, you know, we could see one a week depending on the school. I mean, to be fair, that's been pretty consistent. I would, to your point, the thing we've seen the biggest growth in or the largest number of increase is around Title IX and it's hard to make comparisons because it's not something we report to Desi, it's not, it doesn't get reported in our student data. We do, we are responsible though to the United States Department of Civil Rights. So we have a semi-annual data collection directly with the US DOE that funnels through the Office of Civil Rights in Boston where we report sort of federal protection potential violations. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Duncan, I appreciate that.
But I'm happy to come back with you with a breakdown.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the future meeting it might be worth, you know, yeah, maybe future Subcommittee Meeting to just get a better sense of what that looks like within the district.
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the work you're doing.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
So these six policies we already had, right? We're just updating them.
Three you already had that we're updating and then three we're proposing as new.
Okay.
But they all came from MASC.
And they all were approved through MASC. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. And the, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. LaBalle, or Dr. LaBalle.
It's okay.
On the grievance procedure.
Yeah.
The, what I'm trying to figure out is if there is a grievance, no matter who it's from, whether it's a student or staff, where does that grievance go? Is it to you or does it send to the government?
Oh, no, it comes to the district. It comes to, it comes to my office.
Who's in charge of that then? Is that you that would say, you said there's a grievance or he doesn't?
Yes. So upon initial intake of a potential violation, there is what's referred to as an intake meeting, fact-finding, right? So just because I say this happened doesn't make it so, right? So we don't necessarily immediately implement full civil rights protections of the grievance procedure until we do a little bit of fact-finding to determine there has been a potential violation. At that point then, it kicks into a very formal process that requires prior parental notification, prior to an investigation, consultation with family and students, comprehensive interviews, and in some instances, we've had to examine cell phone videos and text messages and screenshots of back and forth issues that the families will provide or the students give to us, but not initially, not everything. We work with children, right? So not every unintentional bump on the playground rises to a civil rights grievance, right? There's an intake process, usually myself and the school or the person who made the claim. So the way the policy is written is the first point of contact is to the building principal, right? As under ed reform, they are the instructional leader, they take full responsibility for the policy implementation in their building and then they're to notify me and then we have an intake conversation. Who, when, where, how, what were the variables, what was the language used, what was the general intent? And I only do that, I say that because there are certain, for example, under Title IX, there are very specific, there are very specific rules around what is and is not Title IX. So for example, in bullying, let's say the kids are at a game in Taunton, at a football game and words are exchanged. Under the bullying regulations, right, we have to implement an investigation in partnership with Taunton to figure out what happened because under the bullying law, we're responsible for our kids wherever they go, wherever they're doing, whether it's school-sponsored or not. If they're together, they're our responsibility. Differentiated against however, Title IX, right? So it's only a Title IX violation for the district if the district had control over the harasser and control over the context of the harassment. So if the kids were at Taunton High School at a football game and something alleges to have occurred, unlike if we use the bullying lens, back to your question of what's the most area for growth, it's literally simultaneously managing all these things at the same time because they have to investigate under bullying, right? That is a potential bullying violation, but not under Title IX because we neither control the context nor the harasser, right? It's also specific on incidents that occur in the continent, in the United States. So if there is a high school trip to France and something happens, Title IX, it's a protection of the United States. France has their own laws and protections, right? So there's nuances like that to them that in that initial conversation with the principal or the counselor or the AP, whoever received the complaint, we do initial intake, but not everything goes to full grievance procedure, nor is everything a violation.
I just wanted to clarify one thing, that this applies to everybody that works for Brockton Public Schools?
Staff, students, faculty, volunteers, everybody.
Everybody.
Yeah. Bus drivers, custodians, everyone in the district, yeah.
Just so everybody knows.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely, anytime. Thank you.
Any more questions by any members?
I have a question.
Sure.
When it comes to the Title IX investigations, knowing that the principals, the administrators, and they have a designee, is there any instances where, let's say for example, you have an incident that's at the Davis School, but then you have a staff member that's assigned to the Raymond to come in and do that investigation or do we actually just keep it in-house?
It depends. So both. So the way the district has organized the implementation, because under Title IX, people play very specific roles and this role can't be this, it gets very convoluted, but essentially, I'm the district's coordinator. Every principal in the Brockton Public Schools in Title IX issues serves as the decision-maker. So their role is specific to somebody else, usually the assistant principal, who have all been trained in investigation techniques and write-ups and model template reports. The assistant principal serves as the investigator, the principal serves as decision-maker and then I serve as the coordinator who's overseeing the activities of both the investigator and the decision-maker. So there have been instances where, given the nature of the incident, we have decided it is best to, for example, to have our firm deal with it when it deals with issues of sexual assault or rape, right? So there are certain topics that we will turn over along with notification, a law enforcement, but we, again, no law enforcement investigation under Title IX stops you from doing what you have to do under Title IX. So that's the one place where we don't pause because the police are doing their thing. We have to provide immediate protections in school to assure the safety of all parties. So there's times like that, right, where we'll have an independent firm come in and investigate or if the building is dealing with such a volume at one time that, for example, Ed East and Tracy and the team there will be totally agreeable to me sharing this with you, but they were dealing with literally four incidents within a 48-hour period last year. And so because of the, some of the students who were in some of our substantially separate programs for special ed, the feeling among the building team was they're going to be better with me than a stranger. So if anything, Tracy, the principal, removed herself from decision-maker and then stepped into investigator. And then the other cases, the decision-maker then for those cases, Dr. Connors was one for one of the cases, Allison Ramsey at North served as decision-maker for another because the role is very defined. The role looks at the investigation the investigator has done and then determines whether or not there's been a policy violation. Once they make the determination and then goes back to the principal for the application of discipline. Does that make sense? So there have been instances where because we now are at a point where I know all of our assistant principals in the entire district have been trained on investigation techniques and protocols that I can easily swap out investigators. The other place, Title IX requires an investigation free of any bias. So there are times when I might say to the school, do you feel like you can do the investigation and remain impartial? Or based on family feedback, who will say, no matter what, you can do it all day long, but they're never going to give my student a fair shot. So I'll say to the parent, well, what about this? Would you be agreeable if a different investigator stepped in from a different school? And they'll say, well, yeah, that'll be good, right? So we do apply that, but it's very case-specific. But there have been instances where other people have served in the role of decision-maker and of, the superintendent in this instance serves as the ultimate appeal officer, which is why it's generally the APs are the investigators, the principals are the decision-makers, the superintendent is the appeal and I'm the coordinator. And we, that's one of the policies where we all play very specific roles.
So when it comes to, you know, knowing Brockton is a very diverse, very linguistic district, how do we, do you bring in the bilingual department into this if there's a language barrier?
We sure do.
Or do we have individuals that are specifically trained in doing these investigations that are bilingual?
Absolutely, yes. And actually, a case, about a year and a half ago or so at one of our middle schools, what dawned on me was needing to talk differently with our translators. As you know, for those who speak multiple languages, there are oftentimes instances where concepts exist in language A that are described differently in B. And so the, at the time, Policy ACAB, sexual harassment, the Portuguese translation was sexual acosto. And the translator in the middle of a conversation with the family said, that's not what that means. That's not what that means. So we actually had to go back and we pulled the policy down, we went back to the translation company that we work with and she said, the word, what they've given you is a cost, which is not harassment. We have, we don't have the same concept of what that means. And so in fact, our subsequent updating of the translation was all because of the role of our community facilitators and translators who are able to then say to me, that's not what that means. And so let me explain this to this family differently. The other place where we will also have translators is, and this can sometimes, to be fair, delay, is all the reports are then translated into all the languages spoken. So if it takes, say, a week or two to get a report done or investigation report done, we then have to wait X days for it to go to the translators. That can sometimes, the perception can be it slows down, so we've actually reached out in the native language to explain, here's now what's happening. So you certainly, we will send you an English version, you're welcome to that, but do you know that we're going to be giving you one in your language? And our team has also offered, or our English team, I mean, to sit with the families to help explain what some of those translations might mean. But they've been instrumental in us making the policy and procedure more accessible to more people.
All right, thank you. The other pieces, once we update our policies, I know most of them, you know, well, all of them, they go onto our website for, do we actually send out a bulletin to the communities? Do we email the parents, say, listen, the school committee just updated these policies just to give you guys a reference, this is the change? I mean, how do we?
So we certainly can. What generally happened in What generally happened, and that was the other change with all the handbooks, is now these live in your student parent handbooks, or student caregiver handbooks, right? There was reference to them prior, but when we would deal with real issues and it came down to looking at what was in the handbook, it would make reference to policy ACAB, but policies AB didn't live in the handbook. So that, so that's where you saw those additional sections being added in, which is a collection of all the committee's policies. So because we, I will see where we are with the translations, because as soon as the committee votes to adopt these policies, our goal is to immediately start a, at one point, we thought we would have to do an addendum, but we're at a point where we might be able to simply sort of up, change the upload and have them already living in the handbooks. But because it impacts such a wide swath of people, we can certainly make an announcement to the community, letting them know that the policies have been updated, you can find them here on the website, as well as updated, we're working to update all student parent handbooks as well. That's the major way that we exchange the information with families, and they certify that they've received it, and same with staff, actually, we're in the middle of, right now, all of our staff. And so if you all get an email from me as committee members, I apologize in advance, but I, you will have to watch at some point a 35-minute training video on your policies, listening to me having to narrate in the corner, so I apologize in advance. And don't judge me when it first comes up, because I was making a funny face and I couldn't figure out how to fix it, and so I'm like looking like this as it opens. But this year, with DESI coming in December, we have to, I'm doing my best to ensure every single volunteer, employee, bus driver, custodian, regardless of your role, we have your sign-off of having read and understood the committee's policies on civil rights. That's an annual requirement we do every year.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions from any members of the committee? We can entertain a motion.
Civil rights policies AC, ACA, ACA-R, ACAB, ACGA, and ACGB.
Second.
Motion was properly made by Mrs. Sullivan. I will give it to Mr. Sullivan, the dean, on approval of civil rights policies AC, ACA, ACA-R, ACAB, ACGA, ACGB. And this, we will do a show of hands, make it. It is unanimous, and that passes. And we will move on to discussion of policy IHBG, which is the homeschooling superintendent, oh, actually, Mr. Dr. Lebois.
Hello again, you again. Nice to see you. It's been so long. The committee discussed the initial draft of this policy last winter. You might remember Ms. Andra Serpa from the Director of Parent Communication, the Parent Information Center, was there with you, making some proposals. There was a discussion among the committee, we went back, and what, as the new year was beginning to open and the applications were beginning to come in for homeschooling, I think there was a recognition of, oh, we never circled back to that. And so what you have in front of you is the proposal from the last committee meeting where there was a first reading done, and you'll notice there are a couple of edits that were added. And so if I can draw your attention to IHBG homeschooling, the last paragraph, it's a little faint, but you'll notice it highlighted. What the policy states is a student being educated at a home-based program within the district may have access to our public school activities of either curricular or extracurricular nature upon the approval of the superintendent. And so just to be clear, transparency with all of you, what that means is if you are being homeschooled with the permission of the superintendent, you can engage in our extracurricular activities, our athletic programs, as any other student would. That is not an uncommon sort of decision of districts across the Commonwealth, but do note that it was inserted in there to be clear that it is the superintendent's discretion and determination, but that the opportunity is there. We'll often get calls from families around, can I, student, engage in X or Y, or go to this club or that club, but we're being homeschooled. And we'll say, they're still neighborhood kids, you all still go to, you live together, absolutely, come on in. Just because you don't go to school with us doesn't mean you're not a resident and all of our support programs are available to you. And the other thing that I'll note is you'll notice the updated 2023, that was a new update from MASC's draft policy. And the only other thing Ms. Andra Serpa had inserted in for the regulations, which is the next page, is the completion of an online application. Historically, via email or hard copy, applications on an annual basis, so for the committee's memory, if you are homeschooled, that requires annual approval every single year. And so rather than dealing with the paper and the influx, the feeling was, and you'll notice it's attached to the back of the policies, is an online homeschooling application where materials can be uploaded, the application is made right online, and then if approved, the data actually transitions right into our infinite campus data management system, where actually that's how we are tracking and monitoring who is actively on homeschool, who has sent in progress reports, and have we sort of complied with the case, the Care and Protection in Charles, which was the establishment of the right for homeschool in the Commonwealth. And so it does, in the opinion of our office, brings the application process into the 21st century. That doesn't mean we won't accept paper applications. What it means is, rather than people trying to sort of send in multiple documents and exchange and attach, we give them an online form to do that in, which is a change from how we would traditionally have done that. You'll notice that it says online application inserted into B under 1.
Thank you. Any questions from any members? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Lebois, one question.
Sure.
On page 32, I guess it is. IHBG.
Yep.
Item three, the textbooks area. What I'm trying to figure out is, who pays for those, or are they returned when they're done?
It's the parent or guardian. So when a parent elects to homeschool, what they have to certify to the district in order for us to bring it to the committee for approval, because ultimately, the committee actually approves whether or not a student can be homeschooled. They have to tell us what is the curriculum they're going to use and the proposed number of hours of instruction, 900 for elementary, 990 for secondary, a resume or some kind of a summary of what the parent's competence is to teach.
Right.
And then what textbooks, workbooks, or materials the family would be using. So those are not district materials, those are solely a responsibility of the family who's homeschooling. We don't, that doesn't mean we wouldn't share resources, or if we had, happy to come in and share whatever, but as a general rule, we do not give our curriculum materials over to families who choose to homeschool. The impetus is on them to show us what they plan on using, and we generally do not give them our materials to implement.
What I was driving at is the, we're one-to-one on the computers, are they going to get a computer and then return it at the end of the year?
No. No, they're not enrolled with us, they're not, they're not Brockton Public School students, they're homeschool students.
Chapter 70 doesn't apply to them?
No. It does not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions? Mr. Vega?
First of all, I missed out on saying, happy first day of school.
Hey, we did it, it was a wonderful day, it really was. We're saving that for the 7th.
But, so, you know, in talking about homeschooling, and I don't know if this is a question purely for you, or if anybody in the room, Dr. Teheliani might have some thoughts on this, like, what kind of effect, if any, does homeschooling have on the district's overall budget? Like, are there resources reallocated in any way, shape, or form for homeschooling?
No, I mean, I want to speak for Dr. Teheliani, but the general practice is they are essentially enrolled in a private school, like, there is no money coming in, no money going out, they're not counted in our census, once we know. Now, we count them in our information, student information management systems, we know who the families are, and if they move, or if they, new families move in, we're able to track it, so we have a separate list, but they're not considered active in what we would send to DESI. So they don't show up in our enrollment numbers, nor does any money go in or out for them.
And then tying back to your earlier presentation.
Yeah.
Is there any potential conflict in having homeschooled students who are engaged in, you know, in Brockton Public School, extracurricular or other opportunities, in terms of their ability to make a Title IX grievance, or our ability to, or, you know, another student or family or administrator's teacher to make a grievance that relates to them?
So it would...
Basically, does Title IX apply to homeschool students and families who use our resources?
If the alleged occurrence happened while accessing or using our resources. So remember, for Title IX, it's only a Title IX violation if the district had oversight or control of the harasser or the context of the harassment, right? So if things happen during the day, it's not, now, that doesn't mean we wouldn't support, doesn't mean we don't report to the police, it doesn't mean we do all the other pieces, but Title IX doesn't kick in. And so if the alleged incident occurred, now, I will be clear, if the families do choose to participate in, say, an after school club or activity or athletics, they have to sign all of the same disclosures and assurances as any other enrolled student. So if there's an athletic handbook, they sign that, they agree to all the committee's policies and procedures while accessing that component of your program. So if the behavior or something happened during that context, yes, Title IX would certainly suffice, or certainly kick in, rather, but that's dependent on it happening under our control or our, our control of the harasser or the context.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions by any members? I have just one, hopefully it doesn't fall, when, when we determine the competency, competency of the parent or the guardian to teach the child.
Yeah.
Is there, I'm assuming there's like a baseline of they have to meet certain criterias, but who determines what that criteria is, and how do you test them to make sure that they're able to even educate their own child?
So we, so to be fair, the, there was a landmark civil, Supreme Court case, the Care and Protection of Charles, which established what school districts can and cannot ask families when they go to educate their children at home. The Commonwealth asserts that parents have the right to educate their children. So under that decision, those are the four areas that the district has any authority to even ask about, to be fair, and it's very structured, right? It's the proposed curriculum, the hours of instruction, are you competent to do it, what are you going to use, and you're going to send us periodic updates of how they're doing. That is the extent of any, our ability to approve or disapprove. Now, that said, we generally look for at least a high school diploma or GED, as well as a well-articulated plan of how they're going to address the learning needs of their students. And as long as that is reasonably sort of reviewed and assessed to be fair, to be sort of effective or potentially effective, it's suggested to the committee for approval. But there is no sort of legal standard of you have to have a bachelor's degree or a master's degree or anything like that. If there is competent writing skills, articulation, language skills, they can articulate to us what makes them qualified to do it. We generally will look for at least a high school diploma, but there's no requirement of any degree beyond that. Parents truly in Massachusetts have the right to educate their own kids. And that court case kind of established what districts can actually ask, and it's very limited to those four things. For example, I could not make a judgment, if the parent submitted a full curriculum, I couldn't say, you can't do that, you got to do this one. Like, I have no authority to step into that parent's decision-making ability for their family. I can assert that it's a curriculum, I can assert that it's going to cover the standards of that grade, and as long as they assert they're going to cover the hours, they have a curriculum, and they're qualified to do it, it's generally approved.
Has there been any cases within Brockton that that's ever been denied for homeschooling?
Not to my knowledge, no. I do know that we will, particularly through Ms. Andra Serpa over at Parent Information, will reach out with families to provide clarification, follow-up discussions, you know, you sent me X, I'm looking for Y, could you show me something that shows us Y? Our goal is to really support families in achieving their vision of education for their child, and if we need more clarity before we can reasonably say this is okay, then she'll seek that. And there have been times when we haven't put an application forward for review because pieces were missing, so that is fair. But no, nothing brought before the committee hasn't passed muster across all four of those components.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes, I just had a question.
Sure.
Do these children that are homeschooled, do they have to take the MCAS test?
They do not, no.
Oh.
No.
Interesting. All set? Any more, Mr. Sullivan?
Just one quick question.
All by Mrs. Azak.
If a senior is homeschooled.
Yeah.
At the end of the year, does he get a diploma from Brockton Public Schools?
He does not, no.
He doesn't get a diploma?
He does not, no. He didn't graduate from the high school. They truly are independently educated students. Essentially, it's a private school of one. It's like going to their academy and getting a diploma, you'd get a diploma from there, right? And some families will use, there are well-established national homeschool programs, right, where families can pay, and they'll get a diploma potentially from that organization that they've completed the course of study, but not a Brockton High School diploma.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Dr. Lebois.
Of course.
Just a quick question. I know I've gone back and forth with Mrs. Serpa. I know she hyphenated, Andrade Serpa, Serpa Andrade. How many do we currently have enrolled as far as homeschooling? How many, how many cases do we have?
So I would have to get back to you, because the new year is beginning, at your next regular meeting, you'll be approving the first round of approvals for this year. So let me get back to you, only because we have some in queue that have come in for requests for review since the year began.
I know it wasn't a large number, lots of time checked before, it wasn't...
No, 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 no. But I don't want to misspeak, to be fair, and I can't pull off the top of my brain, so I will circle back to you.
And I appreciate that they, they do allow them, even though they're being homeschooled, they're allowing them to be able to get access to some of the, you know, extracurriculum, like, the activities that we offer are Brockton Public Schools.
Yep.
Even though technically they're not within Brockton Public Schools, so that, that's a nice bonus that they can be part of that. But no, thank you, I was just curious on the number.
Yeah, I can certainly get back to you. I don't want to, I hesitate to give a firm number only because we're in the middle of the approval process now.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
If we have no further questions, we entertain a motion to approve policy IHBG homeschooling.
Motion to approve policy IHBG, which is the homeschooling policy.
Second.
Motion is properly made by Mrs. Sullivan, seconded by Mrs. Azak to approve policy IHBG homeschooling, with a show of hands. Also, before we take that vote, Melina, can you just reflect that Mr. Gomes did join us? Show of hands to approve, it is unanimous, policy IHBG homeschooling is approved, and can we get a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, everyone.
Oh, sorry, sorry, do we have any other business on policy? Mr. Vega?
Just, you know, just a question, you know, and I think if it's within the policy meeting, to the vice chair's question earlier about translation and how it plays into some of the elements that the doctor was speaking about, you know, at some point, we should probably think about what translations we're offering, you know, both here in the room and, you know, with our partners on BCA, we have a number of non-English speakers or English as second language speakers who bring a wealth of expertise, who might want to come to the visitors' podium, but without a translator in the room, that becomes difficult. And also, for those who might be watching on the channel, while YouTube does provide a translation ability, it's far off the mark oftentimes, so, so just thinking about that. I mean, I know that's something we want to build into our policy thinking. I know many people struggle with the same thing with the city council meetings. If we truly want to be a city that embraces the diversity and the wealth of knowledge that comes from an immigrant population and a non-English speaking population, we need to put the resources in place for that to happen. So, so, you know, I, I think that might be something that sits at the policy level about how we address that. And, you know, it'd be great, because the school committee could take the lead on something that the whole city needs to be thinking about.
No, definitely agree with you with that, and we can work with the superintendent on addressing that, and we could schedule a future policy, and we have a few more policies that we have to update with this committee, so. Anybody else with any other business? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Oliver, show of hands, unanimous, meeting is over.